Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners February 6th Business Meeting. Before I ask Mr. Krupp to take the roll call, I want you all to know it's a very special day in Clackamas County. You see, today is Mr. Krupp's birthday. And so, yeah, thank you, yes, Mr. Krupp. I love the view of that. So anyway, happy birthday, Don. We won't ask you your age, but I'm sure it's old enough to take care of our business here at Clackamas County.
Well, let me tell you, this cost me $61 at Rotary yesterday.
Well, there's a clue there somewhere, right. Ms. Krupp, will you please take the role of the commissioners?
Certainly, yes. Commissioner Bernard.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Please all rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the surface, this looks like a very short agenda. We have quite a few cards up here, however, and our commissioners' communication tends to run a little long. But I'd like to just change the agenda to do the following for a very short presentation. On our agenda, it shows a presentation on Mount Hood Express Bus Service. And Mr. Krupp, would you do the intros on that? Let's just get that underway.
I certainly will, yes. And of course, you know, in October of last year, 2013, we expanded our Mount Hood Express service. And so I want to invite Theresa Christopherson to come on up, and oh, she's already up, and give a presentation and share a video, so.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. My name is Theresa Christopherson, and I'm with the Social Services Division here at Clackamas County. And I am the project manager for the Mount Hood Express service. I'm delighted to be here today to give you a quick update on that service. It has undergone some very significant changes over the last few months, and we're very, very excited about the progress of the service. I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. John Tullis, who is with Timberline Lodge. He is here representing our private partners in this effort, including Timberline Lodge, the resort at the mountain, and Mount Hood Ski Ball. Again, this is an exciting time. We have a new service model that started October 1st. And I'd hope you would join me in watching a brief video presentation that was put together by our own Cable and Communications Division that talks about the new service.
Thank you.
With the inauguration of the new Mount Hood Express Bus Service, for the first time ever, there is now public transportation from the city of Sandy all the way to Timberline Lodge on Mount Hood.
Are we ready?
Yes. There we go.
The Mount Hood Express is the latest incarnation of the old Mountain Express, which only ran as far as Roderndenran. Funding for that service ran out in October 2012. Clackamas County Administrative Services Manager Theresa Christopherson managed the old Mountain Express and was instrumental in obtaining the federal grants necessary to make the new Mount Hood Express a reality.
And there was really a recognition, kind of on a larger level, that public transit serves an important role in the mountain communities. It serves an important role and could potentially serve a larger role if the opportunities were available.
The newly expanded Mount Hood Express service was made possible by a federal lands access program grant of $476,000 to cover two years of operating costs and another federal grant of $460,000 to pay for new vehicles and specialized equipment for transporting skis, snowboards, mountain bikes, and other recreational gear.
In addition to providing safe, alternative transportation up to the mountain here, we hope it's going to help reduce congestion. We're looking forward to partnering with all of you in this public-private partnership and look forward to a wildly successful, popular, fun ride up to the mountain in the future.
The Mount Hood Express has contracted with Rojoy Services, a local transit company, to operate the line, which serves all the mountain communities between Sandy and Timberline. The year-round service has five runs daily, seven days a week, and adds two additional runs during the winter to accommodate the seasonal increase in recreation on the mountain. Rojoy Program Manager Joyce Ledoux hopes one of the benefits of the new service will be a reduction in the number of accidents on the road from Government Camp to Timberline Lodge.
The road to Timberline is steep. It's crooked, and it is the steepest road in the state of Oregon. Seventeen percent graded places. So a lot of people don't like to drive it, and it can get rather hazardous in wintertime.
Parking at the mountain has also been a continuing problem that hopefully the Mount Hood Express will ease.
Often, in the winter, Timberline's parking lot is full, and they have to have somebody down at the bottom turning people away until somebody leaves.
The fare on the Mount Hood Express is $2 one-way, or a book of 20 rides will reduce the price to $1.50 each way, making it a very cost-effective transportation option. The hope is that it will bring an increase in the number of people who travel to Mount Hood and its surrounding communities. Officials, including Clackamas County Commissioner Jim Bernard, are excited about the potential economic boost the Mount Hood Express will bring.
You know, there are so many great opportunities that frankly, Timberline, Mount Hood has missed out on for a long time because of transportation issues. I mean, today's the turning point. Today, I think Clackamas County, Timberline, and Government Camp and their partnership have hit a new era, an era that many mountain communities across the nation have done for decades. But, you know, those partnerships didn't exist until recently.
Everybody's working together, and it's a great example of what nonpartisan politics and people just working together can get done for the betterment of the community. And this allows Sandy to be a gateway with food, gas, recreational equipment rentals, such as camping, skis, snowshoes, bikes, to enjoy mountain activities. It's going to run in the summertime, too, so all of the mountain bike people can enjoy it.
Over the years, there have been many attempts to improve transportation options on Mount Hood. In 1956, there was even a unique tram system installed between Government Camp and Timberline Lodge, which used buses as gondolas.
It flies through the air with the greatest of ease. Unless you insist on walking, you take the skiway, the longest and largest aerial tramway in the world, to the top. Two years of work went into building this Timberline trolley. On a web of cables, it climbs 2,100 feet in 10 minutes.
But the skiway shut down after only two years because of high maintenance and operating costs. There is some discussion of a new tram to Timberline, as well as possible expansion of the bus service to Hood River. But even continuation of the existing Mount Hood Express between Sandy and Timberline Lodge after the initial two years comes down to a question of dollars.
You know, the key part of that planning for us is going to be looking at how much is the service truly used? You know, if people are using it, if there continues to be that willingness from the public to participate in the program, then, you know, we will continue to find strategies to get it funded in the long run.
John, if you'd like to come up, speak at all. That's fine. All right, well, I thought, since you're here, you might want to say something, John.
Thank you, yes. Well, I'm representing your private partners in this effort. And as the film illustrated nicely, I think it is safe to say that this expanded service is working. And we wanted to come down and express our gratitude to you for your vision and your support. The entire business community up on the mountain, and really, the entire community, has embraced this. And I think we've proven that it could work and that it should continue. And again, I wanted to express my gratitude to the commissioners and also to your staff member Theresa, who's done a really spectacular diligent job. And I wanted to let you know that we stand ready to assist in the future partnership of the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. I appreciate you coming. And Theresa, yeah, go ahead. Theresa, thank you for the presentation. Any further words?
No, I just want to really point out what a successful partnership this has been for Clackamas County and for both our private partners and our public partners who have stepped up to the plate. The ridership has been very good. We've exceeded our initial expectations for ridership. We're getting riders coming from the Portland Airport. I got a great email from a rider who came from Hawaii, who was appreciative of the service. You know, so really, I just think we can emphasize that this service is being used. We're very pleased with it so far, and thank you again for your support.
Commissioner Savis.
I just want to give my appreciation to everyone and all the partners involved. And I know that, sure, if Bob Reeves could be here today, he would. And I know we all have conflicts. And on the very day where you guys cut the ribbon on this, we also had a conflict where we couldn't attend. But you were in my thoughts that day. But I know that the advocacy that Bob has done, since I've been a commissioner, Bob Reeves has done for transportation on the mountain has been significant. And he's just been steadfast in his advocacy for that. And I appreciate everyone coming together to make this happen. So congratulations, and also appreciate Commissioner Bernard being able to make it there that day to participate.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, actually, the future of this transportation system very much depends on those business partnerships. And recently, they all committed their dollars to moving forward to figure out how to make this work. So we're looking at a transportation management, TMA, association to figure out how to not only get the money, or receive money, from our federal and state partners, but also from the business community. Because, you know, frankly, at Timberline, you can't just plow away half the mountain and add a parking lot. You don't have a lot of choices. You have to figure out a system. And parking down below in Roderndenran or various places along the route is another thing that we've been looking at, trying to figure out what's the best solution there. So I want to thank the partnership of the business community for their support of the future of this system. And look forward to the discussion on the tram, which could also be a very, very helpful tool for reducing, well, providing safer transportation and reducing the need for cars to go up on the mountain. So thank you very much.
You know, that begs the question, as explained in the film, is the whole idea of a lack of sustainability, if you will, what happens after that two years? And I do appreciate the partnership that our businesses have entered into and the long-range idea that a tram would be appropriate. But that gets back into the whole idea of Tri-Met. Tri-Met, under $1.2 or $3 billion debt, they have no plans of paying off, and they're continuing cutting in Clackamas County and other places of their bus routes. And therefore, our citizens are not being served. So I wrote a position paper here about six months ago where I talked about cannot a county do it better, cheaper, and faster. Specifically, you look at our cities like Canby, Sandy, and Wilsonville, who have developed incredible models, a lot less, and they go actually door-to-door and pick people up. One of the things we heard up in Sandy was, well, in Roderndenran, et cetera, is, what about seniors especially, who just need to get down and get their prescription? Wouldn't it be fantastic if we actually served our entire county, not just that area in Tri-Met? Wouldn't it be fantastic if we were able to afford a service, including these kind of corridors, and splintering off of that to give better service to those people who are in need, who expect that? The amount of money that our businesses here in Clackamas County and the Tri-Metistic pay, in my opinion, we are not getting our fair share. And we're not getting the service that certainly people need. So I look forward to the discussion about whether we can do it better. And certainly, that would involve the legislature, let alone, of course, Tri-Met. Commissioner Savis.
Just want to add, I just hope that we don't necessarily think that it has to be provided, you know, solely by a government provider. That, you know, private, that combination of a public-private partnership with transportation needs are... There's some great models, and I think even the ambulance contract is a great model of the private sector offering a service in partnership with government. So there are means where that can be actually more efficient at times. And I know that some of us have concerns about expanding the role of government, and some people are not adverse to that. But I think that we, I think it's really about the quality of service and doing it at an efficient and fair price.
Agreed, Mr. Savis. And if you think about what Tri-Met is, it's supposed to be a private-public partnership. Because the private is the businesses they tax. The private is the people that they are supposed to serve. So I do view the model as a private-public partnership when we're taking from the public, or we're taking from businesses particular money to do a particular task. That is a partnership. We just want to analyze whether that's failing or not. So thank you very much, John. I appreciate your input. Theresa, thank you very much today, and we'll get on to citizens' communication. Thanks again for coming.
Thank you, yeah. Three cheers.
And we will begin into citizen communication. Is that music I hear or something? We'll start with two, and I'll put two on deck. It's Mac Woods and Gary Klein, followed by Joe Habbercamp and Charles Savoy. Mac Woods and Gary Klein? Gary Klein here, or... Yeah. Either one of you.
Clackamas County Commissioners and staff, I'm Mac Woods, Canby, rural. Boy, am I learning a lot in a hurry, and I get to be first here for free. Well, there's so much I'm learning by starting to ask questions. And I just spent a couple hours right over here next door at the Clackamas County Tax Assessor's Office, learning what taxes is all about and who pays. I happen to be one of those veterans that's more than 40% disabled, vision. Won't talk about that. I was a lucky one. I come back after four tours in Vietnam. They call it a tour? I mean, they're talking about the politicians? Uh-huh. Let me tell you, is everything except vacation, certainly, they call it tours. It wasn't a tour. Wasn't vacation. Seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And what do the veterans get out of it? We get a tax exemption over here for $2,010. That means for every $1,000, the mileage rate is what they go by, and they get up to $2,000, or two times off of their taxes. That's almost $50 off of your total taxes for giving us, country, the freedom. And right here in Oregon, it needs, not just county, it needs to go statewide. Open the eyes of the cotton-picking veterans, I mean politicians, that are not representing the veterans. As I heard from Mr. Kurt Schrader, what he's doing for the veterans. And I'm here to tell you, he don't have one day in the military. He don't know about the veterans. But he throws up a big smokescreen so he can get some votes. You see, people do that. Politicians that don't know nothing about the veterans, yeah, but they want their vote. Well, guess what? The veterans get newspapers. We can write articles. Guess who's going to be putting some articles in the newspapers for free? Including VFW, American Legion, all of these. We're coming up on voting time, and guess what? The veterans are going to learn who is working for them and who's not, and who gets a vote and who don't. It's going to be fun. I wrote an article, too, asking them to pass it out to you guys. And the word got out somehow. I got a big response, yeah. Hogwash. I took it to the American Legion down in Canby. I said, "Looky here." Yeah, you get to talk three minutes.
I got a lot of cards named Mac, so try to wrap it up, will ya?
Yeah, that's how it works. And I hear some of you guys sit up here and talk about your family for more than three minutes while we sit back there and listen. Have a good day.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, staff, and citizens, thank you for the time to speak. I'm Gary Klein of the city of Milwaukee in Clackamas County. I'm very happy to see the progress of Milwaukee's Riverfront Park. On December 1st, 2012, Phase 1 of the north end of the park was dedicated, and county commissioners were there for the dedication, if not in person and spirit. We are now working on Phase 2 of the south end of the park. I look forward to your support in assisting with an access easement that would be good for Milwaukee Bay Riverfront Park and west.
I appreciate your help. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Commissioner Bernard.
So first off, I'd like to thank Gary because, actually, the Riverfront Project never would have moved forward had it not been for your family's generous donation of the north end near Johnson Creek. So I want to thank you for that. But this access easement has been going, discussion has been going on for quite a few years. Actually, before I was mayor of Milwaukee, I sat on the Riverfront Board, as did you. And we worked for years and finally found a plan that really addressed the needs of the citizens and the community that got together and worked for years on this. So we need to resolve this Riverfront Access Plan, which I was going to go speak to somebody today in the county council's office. But we need to get this resolved and get this project moving because plans are to spend some money this year. And that's holding it up. So I look forward to that discussion. So thank you, Gary, for coming in there.
Thank you.
Chair, I got my...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, Paul. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to also thank Mr. Klein for his contribution to the property, to that, and myself. I believe Commissioner Bernard and I were there the day we did the ribbon-cutting on Klein Point. So, great project. I'm pretty excited about that. And it's somewhat been integral with the, in some degree at least, on the south side now with regard to the easement with Water Environmental Services, CCSD-1. And I met with the mayor last week on this issue, met with staff yesterday on this issue. And I believe we'll be bringing something here forward to the Board of County Commissioners on the property piece, which will be executive session because of the nature of property negotiations. But, so we hope to get that expedited. And unfortunately, this time of year, we've been bogged down with some vacations, Christmas vacations and holidays. And so it's gone a little bit slower than I would have liked. And, but I think we're making progress and hopefully have that wrapped up in the near future.
I appreciate your expediency on it. We've already, as you know, when we...
Gary, can you come closer to the microphone?
Got some funds coming into it, and...
Oh, excuse me. I appreciate your expediency on this because there are some grants and funds coming in.
And so trying to bring this to head would be great.
Yeah, again, I've been communicating with the mayor almost daily, whether electronically or by phone, so.
Thank you. Actually, I never knew much about it. I'd heard, I thought it was in the works, but like the rest of the commissioners, we'll assure you that we will address this very soon. Thank you. Thanks, Gary. All right, the two that were on deck was, and now up are Joe Habbercamp and Charles Savoy, followed by Eric Bishton and Steve Bates.
Chair Ludlow and Commissioners, I'm usually here to complain about something that's not happening. But last Tuesday, I didn't make the meeting, but I'll tell you. I got so many phone calls on both of my phones, and they were so happy. And thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Thank you very much. It takes an exceptional man to say, "Hey, maybe I should look at that again and change my vote." So thank you very much. And then I'd like to talk to Martha Schrader and Paul Savis. The citizens are absolutely... I can't even use the word. They're just so happy that both of you have stood by this project of AMR and the dedication that you have done. And that even though you've got a lot of bad press over it, and everyone's put you down, you know, the public love you. The seniors, the seniors think you are absolutely great. The Citizens Watch Committee think you're great. And so I just wanted to tell you, and another thing, Jim and Paul, you both worked on the bus going up there to the mountain. The three other commissioners weren't on the board then. And I want to thank you for that also. So I will close.
Mr. Savoy.
Morning. Charles Savoy, citizen of Oak Grove. Democracy is a messy and terrible form of government. However, it is the best form of government ever conceived. And in democracy, it is extremely rare that everyone gets what they want: sweet oranges, plums, delicious apples. What we actually get is the best compromise possible: a bag of lemons. Democracy has become increasingly dysfunctional at many levels of our government because those who have been outvoted on this or that matter that was before them become obstructionists rather than participants in the processes necessary to move forward. When given a bag of lemons, obstructionists would rather freeze the lemons than make lemonade. The process of deciding how ambulance services would be provided to the citizens of Clackamas County in the future began in August 2011. Throughout 2012, the Board of Commissioners took input from the citizens, the EMS Council, fire agencies, ambulance service providers, and the EMS professionals. They weighed that input as they provided direction to county staff during the drafting of an RFP. The present board was seated in 2013 and made further changes to the RFP. Then, the majority of this board voted to accept the RFP, and it subsequently was let for bids. Only one bidder submitted a timely bid. The majority of the commissioners voted to accept that bid and to issue and intend to award to that bidder on May 30th, 2013. What followed during the next eight months was disheartening to watch unfold. Then, in what seemed to be the darkest hour of a long and contentious process, reason finally prevailed. Hopefully, we are near the end of the process. Earlier this week, Commissioner Bernard remembered that in a functioning democratic system, you don't always get what you want. What you get is the compromise that the majority agrees to accept. He remembered that the majority of the board had voted to accept AMR's bid proposal. He put aside seeking to continue to perceive his personal preferences and decided to look at the benefits that had been gained for the citizens. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, for making a decision that is in the best interest of the citizens. You have restored my hope for the future of the Clackamas Board of Commissioners. I believe this is a difficult decision considering the political risk. It is certain that some will use this to attack you, but reasonable persons will weigh the benefits of the new contract with AMR against those attacks. I thank Commissioner Savis, who has shown steadfast willingness to weigh all sides of the input that was presented. I believe he has consistently made well-reasoned decisions. I thank Commissioner Schrader, who has tried the rise... I thank Commissioner Schrader, who has tried to rise above the contentiousness of the process and maintained her position politely. Lastly, I would like to thank all of the commissioners, past and present, for the hard work they have done in an effort to improve the quality of Clackamas County EMS system and the ambulance services that are part of that system. I look forward to serving in that system. Thank you. Thank each and every one of you.
Next comes Eric Bishton.
Thanks, Jim.
Eric Bishton and Steve Bates, followed by Les Poole and Maryanna Moore.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to speak to you this morning regarding your consensus to move forward in closing this RFP and accepting AMR's winning bid. It's a relief to taxpayers as well as your community paramedics and EMTs that fairness, fiscal responsibility, and the preservation of the talent of your local EMS workers will prevail with the new majority decision of this commission. I'd also like to recognize that county commissioners, along with paramedics and EMTs, are all people that have decided to dedicate their time to use their respective talents to serve Clackamas County. The matter of reissuing this RFP has drawn out strong feelings. Commissioners Smith and Ludlow have stated unhappiness with the tone of some, of some of the criticism they have received regarding their decisions. It is a sign of healthy community when there is strong civil engagement by citizens. It is also a sign of healthy governing when elected officials respond to the concerns of citizens and are willing to change course when needed. It happens sometimes in life that recognizing what you once thought was the solution has now become the greater problem. Commissioner Bernard has responded to his constituency as well as to his conscience in his decision to accept AMR's winning bid. We've all had the experience of accepting when a situation is not what we once thought it was, but few of us have had to do it in the public eye. In the past couple weeks, it has seemed to me that you have been struggling with this decision. As in any public matter, there will likely be those that will oppose your move towards prudence and denigrate your sensibility despite your clear rationale. It is my hope that this move towards sensibility will continue and others may admit when they have lost sight of the problem. Your decision contrasts that of Mrs. Smith and Mr. Ludlow in that you have responded to difficult questions to ultimately save Clackamas County money and maintain reliable ambulance service. Robust discussion has made it much clearer that resubmitting an RFP for Clackamas County's ambulance service would create less competition since the existing provider's bid has been available to any possible competitors to see. This highly inefficient process would require the redundant spending of taxes not allocated for repeated RFPs. Week after week, month after month, Clackamas citizens and medics have spoke time and time again about their frustration and confusion regarding resubmitting an RFP. Mrs. Schaefer and Mr. Savis have shown that they understand what Clackamas County citizens want and have represented that desire consistently here in this commission. I would like to thank all of you for your service, but most of all, Mrs. Schaefer, Mr. Savis, and Mr. Bernard for their attention to reasonable and responsive politics. I'd also like to thank the many concerned citizens that have kept up with this matter and watched these meetings at home. You speaking out and getting involved has been invaluable to bringing about constructive change. Hopefully, we can finalize this and honor AMR's winning bid with no further hindrance. Thanks for, thanks all of you for your time.
Just, just for a note, it's Commissioner Schrader, not Schaefer. And second of all, you did not state your name and would you do that at this time, please?
Apologies. My name is Eric Bishton.
Thank you. Mr. Bates.
Chair Ludlow, Commissioners, my name's Steve Bates. I'm the Chair of the Boring Community Planning Organization. And of all of the years that I've lived, I never thought that I'd be sitting here talking to you about marijuana. Tuesday night at the Boring Community Planning Organization, one of our citizens came forward and said that there was a cannabis club in Boring. Some of us knew about it, some of us didn't. His biggest complaint was the fact that no one, no local jurisdiction held a hearing about the sighting of this cannabis club. As a result, we did some research and we found out that there's a Senate bill, Senate Bill 1531. There will be a hearing Tuesday morning, and this Senate bill actually gives counties and cities the authority to regulate, prohibit, and, regulate, prohibit, and supervise cannabis clubs or medical marijuana facilities. As a result, the Boring Community Planning Organization passed a position statement by unanimous vote. I'd like to read it to you for the record. You all have a copy of it. But we'll start in the middle. It is hereby stated that local jurisdictions such as Clackamas County should have the ability to regulate or restrict operation of medical marijuana facility, prohibit registration of medical marijuana facility, or regulate, restrict, or prohibit storing or dispensing of marijuana by facility legally authorized to store or dispense marijuana. Senate Bill 1531 will give the governing body of a city or a county such as Clackamas County these abilities. Senate Bill 1531 will give local control to its cities and counties, allowing those jurisdictions the ability to regulate the location of medical marijuana facilities. For these reasons and understandings, the Boring Community Planning Organization supports Senate Bill 1531. The Boring Community Planning Organization hereby requests the efforts of the Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners, State Representatives Bill Kenner, Mark Johnson, and Shamia Fagan, State Senators Alan Olson and Chuck Thompson, to promote the passage of Senate Bill 1531. I will be attending the hearing Tuesday morning in front of the Senate Judiciary Committee, and I would ask that the commission send by email a support for Senate Bill 1531 so that this here, bill can be passed to the floor with a due pass recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I find the huge irony in government regulation that government is doing all it can to eliminate the smoking of cigarettes in every possible place, but yet somehow we want to legalize smoking of marijuana. I find that irony just unbelievable. Secondly, I do not favor the county opening up places to allow for the sale, smoking, distribution, or whatever of recreational marijuana. I will always be in opposition to that, but thank you. Ironically, the, was it the CV Pharmacy? What's the name of that pharmacy?
CVS.
CVS. Announced this week they were not going to sell cigarettes. That's fine to me. By the way, I hate smoking with passion. They're not going to sell cigarettes, but ironically, they may be selling marijuana. Just, just thought I'd, you know, let the folks think about that.
Commissioner Bernard?
Actually, I thought the bill only involved cities and actually left the counties out, but I'll have to look at that.
Jim, you know, that's what I repeated when I was at the CPO, but what we heard from the AOC was cities got to opt out, counties did not. So, you know, that's so ironic. You know, you say, "Well, you can't buy in Clackamas County any pot in the cities," but by call, you go right outside the city limits and you can buy all you want. I think you're the one that told us that that had changed. Is that right, Steve?
According to my reading of Senate Bill 1531, and I do have the text here, it does give the counties the authority and the cities the ability to prohibit. So conceivably, you could, you could prohibit marijuana, medical marijuana facilities within your jurisdiction and force them to go elsewhere. And, and maybe that's what they're referring to.
I think we will have that addressed by Mr. Schmidt. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, I frankly would support this bill, assuming that it does allow counties the ability to cite these facilities. But I think it's also ironic that when we talk about personal property rights and the rights, rights of people to do anything they want on their property, that now we want less government, but now we want more government to regulate marijuana on private property. So the, what is ironic here is that in one area we say, "Let's do less regulation," the other we say, "Let's regulate." But I still agree that this bill, I support moving forward on this bill. And actually, AOC already took a position on the legalization of marijuana as, and their position was no. And the other position was that they're, they're going to support this bill should it include county's ability.
If I may, Chair Ludlow, I would like to make a statement that the Boring Community Planning Organization announced that this was not in any way, form, a promotion for or against marijuana. We were just concerned about the sighting of a medical marijuana facility.
And I think the point is, and Jim talks about private property rights certainly, if somebody was growing pot on their own property, like in Alaska, and using it on their own property, that's one thing. We're talking about the distribution on said private property to others. I think that's primary here. Commissioner Smith?
I want to make the distinction, I don't think anybody said about doing anything on your private property. In fact, this bill cites many different times, the licensed facility has nothing to do with private property rights in this. And so I want to make that distinction. Maybe Mr. Bernard was a little confused, but thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We will take up this issue with Mr. Schmidt, the Head Director of our Public and Government Affairs, and possibly address it for our legislative agenda. And the next two were Les Poole and Maryanna Moore? Followed by Steve Fritz and Jenny Davidson.
Good morning. Les Poole, Oak Grove. I'd seen that flying bus before. That is something else. And I think the viewers in the county would be interested if they searched online for the Highway in the Sky or search for Mass Tram America because that's a project I've known about for a long time where a retired Boeing engineer has actually designed a real tram system using fuselages, recycling airplanes. The guy's, guy's very humble and, and he's the mad scientist in the corner, but I assure you that looking at that flying bus is not what we're talking about in today's world. And I've, many times I have forgotten to thank the commission for keeping the darn rest area open up there. You know, we can laugh about it, but when you come over the mountain and the doors are locked, then you're not laughing. So, kudos for that. Last night I spoke at the roundtable and Paul was there and some staff were there. And, you know, I probably got three and a half minutes in instead of three. And I, I commented on process and on outreach and I've just tried to bring a message that you guys are trying to run a country almost. This is far more complex than the average person would dream. I've been around a lot of government. It'd be a lot easier to work in Salem and to do your job. And I know it gets pretty contentious sometimes. I hope that, that the county can continue to try and work on outreach, getting things online. We don't expect you to go door to door. More email trees, you know what I mean? More email outreach, no matter what the issue is, because sometimes people come in here and they feel like they're finding out at the last minute and nobody's informed them. And a lot of times people are busy and they're mistaken. Other times, people do get left out of the loop. But the better outreach you can do, the more you as commissioners can expect answers to your questions more quickly. That would save a lot of time and energy. I, I also want, I did want to say something else, and that is I am now driving under the overpass that will be the connector for the Sunrise Corridor. And that's a great project. When you hear about the CRC, when you hear about all the, where's our money going and why do we stick 25 million in light rail when we need 20 million for our roads? People forget that the, the CRC and the Sunrise Corridor are about freight movement and jobs. So, I'm really pleased about the Sunrise Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Yes, Maryanna Moore from Gladstone. And it's nice to be here. And I wanted to thank Chair Ludlow this morning for your opening comments and your support for the, for the localized bus. And I really appreciate that. And also a little bit of apology for last week because I saw you on TV. And when you explained that the comments were prior to the meeting, it makes a little difference in what, in the way that you look at it. And so, I would suggest that instead of us getting what happened from a two-minute thing on TV, that you videotape all those. I think it's time that we all had video and we could actually see what went on and really know how these decisions are being made because most people don't come. And you can turn it on and listen to it, but how many people really can absorb a radio program the way that you can when you can see it on video? So I really would request that you try and do that. Let's see, what else? The Gladstone Library is still an issue. And I know you're holding some money that's, whether it goes to Gladstone or Oak Grove or whatever, but the city now has got to put together a whole new committee with like 30 people that are going to discuss this and see what they can come up with. And they have their first meeting next Monday evening. So I thought you might like to be aware of that. Also, the roundtable from last night. There was some of us there and I really commend you on the fact that we do get some replies. I look back at old, old board meetings before you were here and it's just no comment, you know? But still, when, and of course, Paul put together the roundtable before you guys were here. And I think the only one that ever came at all besides him was Jamie. And I really would hope that some of the rest of you would come to those meetings. It's a good time to discuss things. And of course, I was there and Mac was there. And he talked a little bit about the veterans this morning, but one of the things he talked about last night was where they're moving the area for the veterans from over in the other building where they have room and it's ground level apparently, and it can be open on the weekends. And that the move over here will be very inconvenient for the veterans. And we wonder what brought that about and, and if something can't be done that's more considerate of their needs. And I'd like you to explain what is going on. And I think that's about it for today, but I have some, you know, questions you can answer for us. Thank you very much.
I was going to throw in a couple real quick. One, Bob Reeves, whose name is mentioned earlier, who's the Chair of the Villages of Mount Hood, had mentioned to me when I was up doing a presentation on, on road maintenance, that wouldn't it be great if we just turned on the, the corner room camera, specifically that one at the back when we have our meetings in here on Tuesdays where there is action, where there is great discussion and presentations. And so I have put that forward to Public and Government Affairs. They're looking into it. They don't think it'll be a big deal to turn on that camera. Now, it won't be as, you won't see the cameras changing like you do here all the time, but at least you can put faces with names and, and be more entertained than just listening to it alone. So that, that idea is out there, put forward by Mr. Reeves. Second of all, the roundtable is Paul Savis's roundtable. We have all, by the way, everybody up here has gone to those occasionally. I will not attend because a couple of times when I was there, there was actually, some people were very disruptive and accusatory, et cetera. And I've been accused before, obviously, in a regular sense here lately too. But I feel that with the outreach we have with town halls, the fact that we do put on Thursday evening business meetings as well, and certainly the opportunity to come forward and talk with us and to get the answers which you described is quite a bit. And we do have a life beyond that and other obligations, both commission and personal. But I, I've asked Mr. Krupp to consider the discussion. We will discuss as a commission whether that should be the, a commissioner roundtable, specifically Mr. Savis's, because you're right, we have not been attending. Lastly, the, the veterans' move, that was well discussed months ago, but I'm certain that Cindy Becker and others can come forward and discuss that at a latter time, probably under issues. Mr. Krupp, if you'll put that on issues for us next Tuesday at my request, that would be great. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, you know, those are Paul Savis's meetings and many times we are scheduled on those evenings. It's a very big county and there are many, many demands on us. And we don't even come close, I think, probably answering to all the invitations we get to attend things. So I try to go to events where people have not seen me before, if it's something new and different, or maybe it's only a yearly event that comes up. I try to attend those. So, you know, that's why. Yeah.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, I was going to talk, I mean, I still will just briefly, but, so these commissioner roundtables were frankly, were not really my idea. I remember back in 1997, the county commissioners back then were, did Wednesday night roundtable once a month. And I attended those and I thought it was some pretty good dialogue. And, you know, they're not always, even back then, weren't attended by, you know, dozens and dozens of people, even though that happened a couple times. But it's been my, my wish and I've made the request here, actually right here at the dais, to encourage past and present commissioners to attend, to try to give it as much value as possible. My, my feeling was that the more of us that attended when we could, the greater value would be for those. So it's, I never when we could, the greater value would be for those. So, it's, I never took ownership that somehow it was mine and mine alone, and quite the contrary. But nonetheless, it is an opportunity for people to informally talk to us in a very comfortable environment. We're not up here in a dais, talking down. We're at the table, facing each other face-to-face. Nothing's formalized or recorded. We're taking notes and trying to help people through their problems, because not everyone has the courage or the fortitude to come up here, first of all, to speak in front of you, in the camera, and do that. And nonetheless, do it at 10 o'clock in the morning, often. So, they, now, we did increase that to have the, number one, the town halls, as mentioned, and also one evening meeting a month. But in a less formal environment, people can still come forth, and we have been able to solve problems. So, but I did want to talk about, and I'm glad to hear that my fellow colleagues have also heard somewhat of a suggestion, I have as well, about taping our work sessions, because people are realizing that a majority, the meat of our discussions and deliberations occur on those Tuesday work sessions. So, I, when I was out, actually on Monday, when I was at the State of the City address by Mayor Map in Wilsonville, my question to staff then was, you know, was recording of those meetings, and they're video-recorded. They do so in Lake Oswego. They do so in, what's the other city?
Damascus.
In Damascus. They do it in Wilsonville. You know, if they can do it, we should be able to do it. And if we need to add a camera or two, then, you know, that's fine. But I, you know, I think that that would be a great idea. I think that's just, you know, just one more effort to increase transparency. And so, I would advocate for that as well. So, it'll be interesting to see what our staff proposal comes forth, and it sounds like there might be support to do that.
So, one more thing. Is the veterans', the veterans' move, is that all settled?
Yes.
Can you explain more of that?
You know, that work session, we went through that, and the change was probably months ago.
This is a thing we didn't hear.
Again, my promise is it'll be on the issues. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd love to listen in on that, currently listening on that, that will be on next Tuesday's issues list. And we will discuss how that happened, why it happened, and even some disagreement, and where that's coming from. And we'll put you down for a disagrier, as well as Mac Woods, by the way. Thank you very much.
I just heard about it last night, and it sounded like...
It's been around for a while.
A year.
A real long while.
I'm sorry. I hadn't heard about it. But if it's going to be closed to them on Fridays over here...
I understand, Mariana. I got to go. I have more.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay.
So, Steve Fritz and Jenny Davidson, followed by Cindy Lewis Wolfram and Christina Santoyo.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair Ludlow. I'm here today with gratitude for many reasons. But first of all, for the many concerned citizens and seniors that I serve in the Westwood area, I happen to be their PCP, and we do the Starbucks visit at Safeway. And I'm really going to miss that, because my house is on the market, and this will be my last year serving them. But I want to thank Commissioner Bernard, and Commissioner Schrader, and Commissioner Savis, on behalf of so many citizens, for doing what was right with the AMR contract. But also, I'm very, very thankful. I had no idea that you were doing the Mountain Express today. But my granddaughter had a wonderful, beautiful wedding on November 5th. If you can remember, that was the first snowfall. Nobody could get up. 60 people stayed at Timberline. My best girlfriend Joyce has friends that live in Welch's, that were part of the form of the hamlet, part of the committee for all of this. Joyce mentioned to Barbara and her husband that my friend Jenny Davidson has been in the county a long time. She is so thankful for this bus, and so am I, because you don't have to go out of your driveway to take me up to Timberline. And she talked about many faces in the county, how many things she'd worked with. She knew that I had come out for Paul when he first ran, and Joyce said, yeah, she's still on that team. And talked about Commissioner Bernard, and all of you, mostly, McKenimer, and some of them from before. But what I want to tell you is, those kids up there were so excited that they had this snow, they don't have to drive from Sandy up, ruin their cars, or whatever. And if it's really bad, and the bus is going to be too crowded, Timberline sometimes lets them stay overnight. And they said, with your wedding here. But the best thing was, tourism was being promoted in Oregon. It started at the Voodoo Donuts. It went to the mountain. My youngest granddaughter pitches for the Voodoo. She's a pitcher. My middle granddaughter, Kayla, was being married. What a gorgeous wedding. Timberline has some of her wedding publication, and it is in the Bride magazine, just now out. So, I really think that that is one of the best things that you've ever done. All my family snowboards and does wonderful things. So, you can see, I'm ecstatic about all of that. And also, I was concerned about the Josephine, because I do live in the Westwood area. Haven't sold my house yet. Don't know how fast this is going, that project. But the overload on Wedsboro is going to be disastrous. So, I know you're looking into that. I think it's Josephine Estates, or the Pine Creek, whatever. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was brought up last time, and we're looking into that. But remember, that currently, the way the structure is, is that decisions on that are made by the hearings officer, not by this commission.
Yeah.
We can certainly look into it, and look into the staff recommendations. I think that was discussed last time, and talk about the staff recommendations. That's where we're at.
Because I know when I testified last time, you had that, and some of these same people, like I said, Starbucks gets a lot of business from these seniors, because they shop at Safeway and do banking at US.
Thank you, Jenny.
Including this senior.
Yes.
You're not a senior. What do you mean?
Well, just because you've known me forever, and you don't want to be old either.
No.
That's the only reason she said that. Yes, sir?
Good morning. My name is Steve Fritz. I'm a resident of Estacada, Oregon. And as you can see, I'm also an employee of AMR. I am here today, I wasn't going to speak. I don't even have a thing written out. But I feel that if Commissioner Bernard can publicly say he's sorry, and do the right thing, then I feel that it is my responsibility to publicly get up here and say thank you. And I think I say that for... There was something that came out of that, was Tuesday, after the meeting, I immediately went to my wife, and I was grinning ear to ear. And I told her what was going on, and she was just ecstatic. I mean, we've been, obviously, very nervous over this whole thing. She looks at me, and she says, Steve, what'd you learn from this? Huzzly, I looked at her, and I'm like, don't give up hope? She says, no. The wife is always the voice of reason. Thank you.
There is the old phrase, if mama ain't happy, ain't nobody happy.
Exactly.
But again, I just want to say thank you very much for what you're doing, and everybody else.
Thank you very much. Cindy Lewis Wolfram and Christina Santoyo, please, followed by James Lemon.
Can you have the good...
Okay, sounds good. Then would Mr. James Lemon come up, please? Not here either? Or is? Okay. Go ahead, Cindy.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Cindy Lewis Wolfram, Incorporated Milwaukee, in the Westwood area. I'm taking my first minutes here to thank Commissioner Bernard, with everyone else who's been coming up today, not only for the AMR contract going forward, which is a big part of that, but for taking a reasonable stand, and taking a hard stand. One of them has to apologize for what, something that one has done, and then made a better decision, and changing your mind. That takes a strong person. And we appreciate that you are serving on the commission, and representing your constituency. Thank you. I'm also here as the Chair of the Clackamas CPO, and talking here to talk to you about the Josephine Estates subdivision proposal. I recently, in fact, as recently as midnight last night, read the staff recommendations. And I'm a little concerned from what I've read. Earlier this year, we worked on the transportation plan. A lot of folks were working on that transportation plan. And we brought to you a suggestion regarding sidewalks in our area, to help promote safety for the children walking to Bill Quest, or to the Alter Creek School, or to the Saban Schellberg Technical Center. This subdivision has been encouraged by staff recommendations to not participate in expanding those sidewalks to create more additional safety for our children on Webster Road. The recommendation that they're working on is increasing the traffic on non-sidewalked roads within the subdivision, and not having the developer pay towards the sidewalk development along Webster. Now, I know that makes it nicer for the subdivision developer to have to spend less money. But it also doesn't encourage the development of those sidewalks, which we seem to have a financing problem to get done. We could get some more of it done if we looked to that. One of the reasons that they're not being talked about is the fact that they don't have, they don't have an exception to what has been quoted as a rule with regards to an ingress and egress directly to Webster. I would really ask the commission to look at ways that that can be given an exception to that rule, and get that information to the staff, and ask the staff to maybe suggest the alternates to the hearings officer. The hearings officer just basically takes what's coming in. And if the staff is already saying to our constituents, it's already decided, it's done, you can't go forward with anything else, because it's a rule. There are exceptions to all the rules. I'd encourage you to help us in supporting the exception. Thank you.
I'm going to ask a question very quickly of Mr. Madcor, but, you know, we had a lot of testimony about this, as you know. And the involvement of this commission is limited. And I would say to you, regardless of what the staff recommendation is, that does not always come true. And I said the last time people were here, you showing up, and everybody that testified that day, you show up at the hearings officer, put your stuff in writing, preferably two, but also remonstrate against this, and ask for additions, et cetera. That does make a difference with the hearings officer. But Mr. Madcor, what is the role, and what are the limitations of this commission in regards to specifically, like something like this?
This commission chair has delegated its quasi-judicial decision-making authority to a county-hired hearings officer. Hearings officers do land use, code enforcement, animal control. It is a due-process procedure, usually takes place over at the Development Services Building. Staff has an opportunity to present the matter, the applicant does, and interested parties also can appear and be heard, and request that the records stay open for an additional period of time to present their opposition and/or support for the matter itself. So, you would have an opportunity to opine on it. Any decision from there typically goes to Luba, or the Court's Circuit Court, and on a rare occasion, it will come up to this board by way of our ordinance itself. But typically, land use matters do not come before this board.
And specifically, you know, the model that was created for a reason. I remember the days when the commission used to take care of all these things. And the problem is, and would be a legal problem, I believe, for this commission to, on a regular basis, to say to staff, listen, we're going to alter your staff recommendations. We're going to tweak it here and there. And then you can send it to the hearings officer. Do you agree, Mr. Madcor?
I agree, Chair Ludlow, I do. And it's meant to depoliticize a lot of the decision-making as well. Our hearings officers are vetted very carefully. They're all members in good standing of the Washington and/or Oregon bar. Very well-learned in their areas of expertise, be it land use, animal control, building trades, and things along those lines. So, we have it in very capable hands as well.
And they listen really well, is my experience. Mr. Savis?
I just want to just share a very similar situation. In 2011, after I was, a few months after I was sworn in, something in my area, my neck of the woods, and the community was up in arms over a development that was taking place, and they thought it should go a certain way. And I learned that it was already in a very similar stage, you know, to be presented further with the hearings officers involved. And at that point, our hands are tied, really what we can do. And, you know, it was going to be appealed, and ultimately, it was not. But we have, again, we have, as Mr. Legal Counsel, or Mr. Madcor Legal Counsel has stated, that we, our role at a certain point is limited. And we have to be fair to everyone. We've got to be fair to the applicant, who has a right to develop the property, as well as fair to the citizens who are going to be impacted by the property.
I agree with you, Mr. Savis. But the problem that we ran into here was that this development was researched in June of 2013, purchased in November of 2013, application submitted in December, and notice was given to the CPO two weeks ago, so that we received it. No other notice that was given. And that kind of situation kind of puts the neighbors at a disadvantage. And I just was hoping that since you'd had the discussion about the sidewalks, and the cost of those sidewalks, maybe that the development agency, when they made their recommendations, might want to take a look at that again.
Now, here's what we've done, change-wise. First of all, we do believe that there should be multiple signs, especially on a large piece, to let people know something's happening with this property.
Absolutely.
Second of all, we checked, and staff says that all mailings went out 37 days before the hearing. This is what the staff says, you know. And in addition to that, we mail for a further distance than is prescribed and required by law. So, but the posting, I think, is the big one, because people especially drive by that piece a lot, especially those neighbors that came and talked about, I mean, it's right next to it. The posting is so key. We already know that other cities do it much better than we do, and we're going to start doing that better.
That's good.
So, the notation and the posting will happen. The mailings will continue, and, you know, out to neighbors, et cetera. And we will do the best we can, let people know this kind of thing happens, is happening. But again, we state that we cannot enter into the specific discussions, and let's say, the changing of staff recommendations. That's why we employ professionals. We don't always agree with the professionals, but that's our job to discern policy that might change that. I want to thank you both for coming up. Mr., yeah, I'm dismissing you yet, Mr. Lemon.
It's kind of ironic that my last name's Lemon. You mentioned earlier...
Your last name, give us your whole name, please.
James Lemon.
Thank you.
You mentioned earlier that you were going to talk about veterans' affairs on Tuesday, is that correct?
Under issues, yes. But there's a lady sitting behind you, waiting for you to finish. She's going to come up and explain this a little bit.
Okay. No, I was just asking, because I think somebody may have missed it. I just came in today to say thank you to all of you. I think my blood pressure dropped 20 to 40 points, and I know it's higher than it should be.
I traded, mine went up.
It's not a fair trade. And they do have medication for that.
Oh, thank you.
Again, I would like to say thank you to all of you. We're very passionate about what we do. We, I have the best job in the world. I, my job is a thousand times better than yours, I think. Because all I do is help people. That's my goal. Part of the reason I escorted somebody up today was because I wanted to apologize to her.
We can't hear on your microphone.
I wanted to apologize to Cindy. I know a lot of people have been rough on her, and I was true to my comment. You look beautiful this morning, and thank you.
You dog.
And I said it every single time I've seen you. So, again, thank you. I appreciate it. And thank all of you. Just to let you know, Oregon City School District is closing two hours early today, and all evening activities are closed. That's why I had to step out a couple times to take care of my kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you, because it's not very many people can ever make Cindy Becker turn red. So, anyway.
You know, it's one of those things. I think she was put in a bad situation from about 40 different sides. And I hope I just helped her with another one that you guys probably won't ever know about.
Good.
But thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, why don't you come up when you have a chance, and Commissioner Smith?
I want to talk about the RFP for a moment, because I'm not sure when I'm ever going to get a chance to address some of the issues that have come up. I have been very consistent in what... I have been very consistent in what I wanted to see in the RFP. And as we go through these negotiations, and the same issues that I have mentioned time and time again, and that is redundancy. I do not expect one ambulance company, mainly AMR, to address the issue of redundancy in Clackamas County. And what I mean by that is when many emergency vehicles show up on one call. There are pilot projects already being done in Clackamas County, Marion County, Washington, and Multnomah that's trying to address this issue. And what I want to see is, I want to see how we can go further, and I've often said, to me, a system upgrade is not a new ambulance and a GPS. That is not a system upgrade to get people to the hospital faster, more efficiently, and therefore, spread our services over to a wider area. I'm going to continue working on that issue. I know Randy Lauer has expressed, yes, he would do that. He's very willing to look at that issue, because I think that you're looking at that issue in Multnomah County right now. So that's a no brainer. I wanted to have a little bit of contract language in that, and ironically, we couldn't get there until today and yesterday on that. That's the, that's all I wanted. Second item on subcontracts that go to the fire districts. I want a clear and concise language, as close as you can get without demanding or putting a mandate in, how those subcontract with our fire departments create efficiencies and innovation. I did not see that language. I met with Cindy Becker. She says, yes, those contracts, and by the way, our staff did not write those contracts. Indeed, that language needs to be strengthened in that to show innovation and cost savings. Ironically, gee, you wave the wand, and we get that fixed. So those are some of the things I'm going to be working on. But there is one big elephant in the room that I feel that I must address, and that's the very many accusations made at this board and in the newspapers and on the radio that were all on the take for money, from the ambulance company here or an ambulance company there. And I don't know that anybody on this board has taken money recently, so I propose to fix that. I'm going to almost demand in this contract and any other contracts that it be a public policy of this board that commissioners who approve contracts are not allowed to take political contributions in any form from any ambulance company or an ambulance company wanting to bid on a contract that the sitting commissioners have direct influence over. This is a $30 million a year contract. There is a lot of money flying around in a lot of different places. I have been accused of taking money from a possible competitor that wasn't even bid on this, and it was the most outrageous thing I've ever heard on. Also, and I'm not saying it's the people in this room or the people who have testified in the past, but you know, when I get anonymous phone calls of messages left on my phone wanting to kill me, wanting to off me, I take that personal. And I know some of the tactics of the Teamsters Unions have been very vicious. I know people's tires who have been sliced twice, and you're all sitting there acting innocent, and the people listening, oh, that didn't happen to us. So I tend, on my dying days on the commission, to shine a light on union tactics. Just because I disagree with you does not give anybody permission to do bodily harm or threaten any commissioner, because many commissioners have been threatened with what you can't even believe. I'm going to put a stop to that on my dying day, and I'm going to try to eliminate influence peddling in the form of political cash contributions to campaigns. And I ask that you all join me in that. Thank you.
No, Mr. Savoy, you will not speak. Please sit down. Ms. Becker, you are here to talk about the move for the VSOs, Veteran Service Officers. I'm sorry, Jim, I'll get to you, okay? Yes, let's do you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Cindy Becker, Director of Health Housing and Human Services. This has been probably a long process with the county Veteran Service Officers. They, excuse me, they were moved out of their current location because the county was moving the, excuse me, the Office of the Clerk and Records into a single location, which is where the county Veteran Services Officers were. I don't remember the name of the building, I'm sorry. They were moved to the Silver Oak Building, where they currently reside. And that was a temporary move, and the reason for that is that the library network needs to move into that building. Oh, thank you so much. The library network needs to move into that building because they need the loading dock, and so they need that space. And so we had a lot of discussions with members of this commission, and we, because once the clerk moved, we decided that the best location was on the second floor in this building. We agreed that their current location in Silver Oaks is great. We don't disagree with that. Unfortunately, because of the larger facilities planning on where various folks have to move, that the access to that loading site is remained to the library network. So we have taken the space that, where the clerk's office was. We are currently remodeling that space. It's going to be great space. It is right next to the elevators. It has a view of the plaza here. There's going to be additional access to space that they don't currently have now. We have an extra office in there in case they grow. And I know there was concerns about the office not being open on Friday. It's currently not open on Friday. And so we are absolutely committed to making this move as easy as possible on the veterans. We know it's change. We know it's tough, but I think we have tried to take every accommodation possible into account. There is certainly plenty of visitors parking up front. The elevators are right there. Is it ideal from the veteran's perspective? I know some people are very unhappy about it, but I think that we have done with facilities and with the planning a really good job of making this a very welcoming environment for veterans.
I want to point out, ladies and gentlemen, that the, things have changed, as Mr. Poole has mentioned. You know, here is our staff, by the way, watching this meeting. Anytime a subject comes up that has to do with their department, most of the time, they come in or why? To answer your questions, to have the audacity to answer your questions on the spot, not put you off or just ignore you, as you pointed out, Mariana Moore. So I appreciate Cindy doing that. We have several other complaints about this, but just several. And I'm sure that it will serve the veterans, and if it doesn't, ladies and gentlemen, this board will address that as it happens. But Cindy, I appreciate your being here and being responsive to that. Commissioner Bernard?
I just wanted to add that, you know, my opinion is that the process itself, ambulance process, is flawed. And I'm going to, I'm going to commit, as long as I'm here, to figure out a way to fix that, to make it not political. My argument always was that, why do you score things you want? So let's not score things you want. You demand it in a contract, it's in the contract. And many of those things were negotiated back into the agreement. So I'm committed, as long as I'm here, to figuring out a way to make this not political, that, you know, whether or not a business, an ambulance, anybody who applies for a contract contributes to a campaign, I agree. And that's why I created, tried to create the blackout. But my problem was that it didn't occur early enough in the process. It should have occurred almost when we decide to go out and develop an RFP, it should occur then.
I agree.
And it should end when the contract is signed. And I think that will eliminate some of that political pressure and the supposed influence that money has on politicians. So, I mean, I'm committed to figuring out a better way. And there is a better way. I mean, what was Einstein said, that insanity is doing the same, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result? Well, frankly, since the 80s, that has occurred, and it's time that we move past this and in the future, find a process that does work and isn't insane.
Commissioner Savas.
Thank you, Chair. I, you know, I, there's two issues here, and I don't think that they were, bringing them together is necessarily, or associating, people are automatically going to associate by bringing two separate issues together, that they're somehow connected, whether that's right or wrong. But when they're shared in almost the same breath, I think it casts doubt and suspicion on people that may not be, and likely not, associated or warranted. I hope, I remember going back to the exclusion ordinance discussion. I was very troubled to hear that Commissioner Smith felt that she was, you know, and I don't doubt that whatsoever, that Commissioner Smith was accosted or threatened in an elevator when we talked about that. And I certainly hope that Commissioner Smith reported that to the authorities. And I certainly hope that if any one of us get a threatening phone call, that we indeed filed, called up the sheriff's department or whoever the local law enforcement is to report that. But to somehow associate that to another organization or a group of people, I just think without any, without any evidence to show an association, somewhat cast an aspersion on that group, that I just think it's unfair, especially when those folks are out there saving lives. I just think that that's, again, unless there's evidence otherwise, I mean, I just don't think that was a, that people are going to make some linkages there that may not be fair, those that are watching especially. My other thing I want to talk about is, is that as far, as far as a campaign contributions and disclosures, I think that we need to look at that pretty broadly and to focus that simply on an ambulance contract when, you know, frankly, you know, I think it's much broader than that, and it's had serious impacts in past elections, recent past elections, and this current election. So if we're going to start disclosing, I think that we ought to look at it broadly and think about, especially when it comes to legislative seats and senate seats and congressional seats, and look at that. I mean, if Commissioner Smith is suggesting that special interest money should not influence, or somehow this did influence, when, you know, again, if there's evidence that it has. But I think full disclosure in a broader sense ought to be looked at all across the board, because I stand here or sit here today as, at least in the last race, as the least funded candidate in my last race, and tremendous amount of special interest money was put into my race against me. So I think if we're going to do that, let's broaden the scope and look at it holistically, because I do think that it has had a negative impact when it comes to what's really important for the citizens of this county. Now, I've been criticized because I didn't make a decision that one side felt, and then on a different day, on a whole different matter, I was criticized because I didn't make a decision that favored that. Some people looked at that from a partisan lens. And I truly make my decisions based on what I think is in the best interest of the citizens. And that's not a Republican decision, and that's not a Democratic decision. And unfortunately, special interests have impacted the last race, they have impacted this race, and there's already campaign contributions in there where I already feel there already is, there already is a conflict of interest. So if that's going to be the case, let's open that up and broaden it. But I don't, to focus it solely on this, cast an aspersion that somehow, these industries and these people and these employees that are residents of this county are somehow connected to something, when everything else is not, I think that's unfair.
Well, I guess we'd have to define what is a special interest. When anybody gives 50 bucks, they have a special interest in that person. So Commissioner Smith?
I served in the legislature and adhered to reporting standards. I was a lobbyist and adhered to reporting standards through the Ethics and Government Affairs Commission. I just ask this board of commissioners to do the same as our legislators do. When the legislators are in session, they do not accept campaign contributions when making decisions on bills. This particular contract is very valuable, and there is huge amount of special interest to anybody out there. And I have been offered money from both sides on this. During the campaign over a year and a half ago, I turned down money because I knew this issue was coming up, and I did not want to be tainted. So this is a very real issue, because you folks yourself have brought it up. The people have brought this issue up and accused us of taking money. This is my answer to the people's question, a way to be more clear and more transparent as the people have demanded us to be. So we will move forward with this. We'll have lively discussion, and I look forward to it.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a few statements to make about the contract, but I will save them until it is my turn under Commissioner's Communication, which brings about, oh my, let's see, we're back to the actual agenda? Oh, amazing. All right, and now it is time to do the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
All right. Today, we have the Department of Transportation and Development, a board order accepting the simultaneously vacating a portion of South New Kirchner Road under elected officials, and approval of previous business meeting minutes. And for the Business and Community Services, an approval of a contract with Sanders Forest Products doing business as RSG Forest Products for the Cedar Ridge Timber Sale. And that concludes the consent agenda.
I might add, that's one of the shortest ones we've ever had. And actually, this agenda is the shortest one, but that's what we're here to do also, and that's to listen to citizens. So do the commissioners want to remove or pull any of these long lists of items from the agenda? I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Bernard to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll. Commissioner Savas? Aye. Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow? Aye. Passes 5-0. Now it's time for the county birthday boy, I mean, sorry, county administrator update.
So Mary Rathke made sure the agenda was short as a birthday present that I get to share with all of you. I do have a couple of quick items. One is that our Water Environmental Services Department has been working with the North Clackamas School District. They've formed a partnership to work on management of stormwater on school campuses. And one of the things they're going to be doing is putting together a highly visible demonstration project that involves rain gardens and low impact development installations, first beginning at Clackamas High School on the campus there. The idea is to promote water quality while creating some learning opportunities for students in the community. The second item I have is just wanted to let you know that our Department of Transportation and Development, the folks that work in the Recycle at Work program, have presented to the Sandy Library a BRAG Award, a Business Recycling Award Group Award for doing an exceptional job of leading the way on managing resources efficiently while providing a valuable service to the community. And then finally, I just wanted to remind folks that, you know, we are expecting some rather difficult winter weather here. It could begin at any time. I understand the weather report is rather schizy and unpredictable, but we are expecting winter weather conditions extending through and into the, into the weekend. And so I would ask folks to be careful and thoughtful as they are out driving on the roads and keep an eye on things, and keep an eye on what's going on with county services and county facilities.
Great.
Thank you. Now it's time for Commissioner's Communication. I'm going to be very rare in this, and then I have an appointment I must attend, and I will set the agenda with you right after that, but I must take off for an appointment. So I'll go first, and then I'll turn the chair over to Vice Chair Martha Schrader.
I'm a child.
You know, yes, you do. I want the people to note that when we voted in the new vice chair, the vote was four to one. And who voted against it? The new vice chair.
She wasn't here.
If you don't show up, you got it, right?
Yeah, that was a surprise.
You're welcome, Martha. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, we, and there was at that time, three, the majority, that was last week, took a lot of heat, certainly online, on Oregon Live, you know, people clearly identifying themselves as AMR employees, or certainly it was identifiable that they were AMR employees, making wild accusations, as Commissioner Smith has said, about us on the take, taking bribes, which is ludicrous. And it was sad to see that, and to hear, again, Mr. Charles Savoy, the union steward for the Teamsters, say that, you know, when the vote is taken and the losers become obstructionists. Now, he didn't say- Now, he didn't say that about last week's losers, I guess he's just talking about this week's losers are obstructionists. I never view the minority here on Clackamas County Commission as obstructionist. I do appreciate that we had a discussion with the new majority, and they agreed to continue to look at each point delineated in an order that was due actually today to be approved, that was removed, and that ordered, again, spelled out all of the problems we had with the current RFP proposal. I'm not backing down from those. And I'm going to read very shortly, just very short ones, but this is available to anyone that wanted to look, but this was, be the order of the land, last week. But specifically, again, that this process was not competitive, and this was agreed on by a majority, again, before, that the terms were not sustainable with an, I mean, folks, 5%, you go nationwide and check, when an ambulance company cuts 5%, that's huge, that's giant in the industry, and yet this one purportedly cuts 19%, is simply not sustainable. But specifically, I get back to, again, my experience with the words shall, will, and must. Those are big words in the real estate field where I came from, and again, that causes a breach if you do not fulfill your obligations with those three words. The RFP was supposed to identify all the districts, fire districts in the current ALS consortium, as required by the RFP, they did not. And by the way, this proposal will mean less money to our fire districts, I think people need to recognize that. Under the Service and Education, the RFP states development implementation of community-based programs to facilitate and improve injury and illness prevention and system access, they said that needed, this the RFP said, they need a specific description of programs, training personnel, commitments, equipment, and budgeted funds for those programs, they didn't address them. The proposal was to include a description of specific training, personnel commitments, equipment, and budgeted funds committed for the Wilderness Medical Program and River Safety Program. There was no indication of any budgeted funds for these. And the proposal failed to identify the location, as was the will, shall, must, the location at which ambulance maintenance will be conducted. The proposal failed to provide detailed job descriptions and commitments for updated certification for clinical performance as required by that RFP, it was absent. It also, the proposal failed to propose an amount going forward for first responders' supply replenishment, nor did it include a reimbursement mechanism for the districts or other first responders. That's again, the fire district, ladies and gentlemen, we had a concern, the majority last week, about the Office of Inspector General, his decree in 13-18, you can certainly look it up, that there, it could be kickback considered if free things were asked for, and that's what this did, in the Wilderness Program and the River Safety Program. That was concerned, again, last week by the majority, I'll still stand by those. This is, as Jim and I do agree with Jim, it's a fatally flawed program, and perhaps to model other parts of the country, maybe the best way to do that is not to have the redundancy which Miss Miss Consley talks about, of showing up with an ambulance, or, excuse me, a fire truck with five people on board, guzzling diesel, and then a command vehicle, and then having an ambulance show up again, there's incredible waste involved in that. Maybe the best way to do it is to coordinate a program in other parts of the country, like they do in other parts of the country, and that is to have the fire districts do this. Who's first on the scene most of the time? You know, there was a man that ironically, last Thursday, a man came and said, you know, Mr. Liddell, if you were to need help, I would put aside my personal feelings about you, and I would give you the same outstanding service that we give everybody. That very day, on this floor, one of our employees went down, I mean, down to the ground, writhing in pain, moaning, and American Medical Response was late. We have the tapes, we know everything about that, and how long it took them to get here. Again, who was here first in six minutes? It's the fire district. They did all they could for him. I came in even after the ambulance arrived, and the man was still hurting badly, and needed to be transported to a hospital. So I hope that good service that was promised continues, and I pray to God I don't have a heart attack. So that is my comments about the ambulance service, for those who keep kept saying, you've not stated your reasons, you've not stated your reasons, as Mr. Savis said, our reasons are well-stated in our work sessions and study sessions, and as has been suggested by Mr. Reeves up in the mountain and others, we will probably try to start televising those, because I think it's in the good, for the commission, and certainly good for those that might want to view what's going on. I was invited to the Boring CPO meeting, me and our Strategic Policy Administrator, Dan Chandler, to talk about the possibility of Boring becoming a city, then it could be known as Boring City. Not dull, though, that's a different discussion, but we went and talked to them, and certainly, you know, maybe one of the first steps for them to do is really get some representation as a hamlet or a village, that will be discussed later. Our Budget Committee met yesterday to talk about key priorities, general funding, projections, and budgeting principles for this coming year. We have these meetings quarterly, but they're going to start normally quarterly, but now we're going to start having a lot of them, again, working towards the budget. I'm on the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization Policy Committee, which will be meeting tomorrow. Ironically, you know, this is the coordination of what happens when inclement weather occurs. What happens when there's a little bit of a shake? It's been said many times, we have 180 bridges, yet what comes first? We need electricity. How did the repairmen get there if a couple of bridges are out? That kind of thing. Ironically, of course, the feds are defunding everything, including that, and so we have to make some tough decisions on whether this program will continue, this important coordination of cities and counties if a disaster occurs, so we'll be addressing any possible funding that we can come up with in that regard. I want to announce that Congressman Schrader is having a town hall Saturday, February 8th, at 12:00 PM at the Lake Oswego City Hall, and also to announce the town halls that this commission will be having. Our first will be hosted by the Wilsonville Area Chamber of Commerce, at the Wilsonville Community Center, 76, 7965 Southwest Wilsonville Road, 7 to 8:30 PM. Again, April 9th, hosted by Sandy Chamber of Commerce, at Sandy Community Center, 38348, Pioneer Boulevard in Sandy, same time, 7 to 8:30. September 10th Town Hall, Estacada Chamber of Commerce, Estacada City Hall, 475 Southeast Main Street, Estacada, time 7 to 8:30. And finally, on November 12th, Wednesday, hosted by Happy Valley Business Alliance, at the Happy Valley City Hall, 16,000 Southeast Misty Drive, Happy Valley. Ladies and gentlemen, as I always say, and then the rest of the Commissioners going to speak, I really appreciate everybody's come forward today to talk with us or at us, and, you know, you, by showing up, you do make a difference. Obviously, that's true in the most recent vote in regards to the ambulance contract. Thank you very much for your time. Martha?
All righty, you heading out?
Yep.
Okay. See you later. Be careful.
You can go ahead.
Be safe out there, the weather's going to get bad. So Commissioner Smith, would you like to start?
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader? Activities this week, there's been a little traffic issue way out in the country where I live, happens to be on the, on the end of Beaver Creek Road, which is one of our longer roads in the county, at the corner of Unger Road and Windy City, it's called Clark's Four Corners. We have, the, our really good staff here have done a safety audit on how to alleviate those problems. There's a big hill, people speed down Beaver Creek Road like at 60 and 70 miles an hour, because you can, and there's a stop that comes, and there's hills and everything. Anyway, anybody listening in the area, the safety report is done, there's recommendations, there's going to be some very cost-efficient corrections to be done out there. The only way to really permanently correct it is to go down and grade feet off the road, to not make it a hill. We can't afford to do that right now, but we're going to do some minor changes with posting and painting and stuff like that, so anybody that wants an email copy, I hope it gets to the folks out there in the area, that's online. We had a legislative dinner, was it last Thursday? I don't remember. It was very nice, we invited all our Clackamas County Senators and Representatives to attend, and each one of us, Commissioners, had an opportunity to express to us what we would like to see in the legislature. I talked about the Human Services Department, for instance, our health programs, our mental health, the CPOs, there's a lot of changes right now, as you well know, in the health and medical field with insurance, and so we're trying to navigate our way through those as best we can, and it's very difficult. I attended the grand opening of the Corridor Trail at Springwater, where it ended in Boring, and I believe Mr. Bates was there too. That is the completion of a 2.25 miles of the Springwater Trail from Rug Road to D Street, and I believe people can ride their bicycles clear from, in town, clear out there. 13-mile trail, is that right? 26 round trip? Which is just wonderful, and while we're out there, it happened to be really sunny last Saturday, people were out with their dogs and their bicycles and riding around, it was really fun for me to see, because in the country, you really don't have good places to ride your bicycle. As a kid, I grew up on a country road, we had no shoulders and certainly no sidewalks, so I learned to ride on the dirt roads around the field. To me, this would be like heaven to be able to ride a bike on. We also this week had a luncheon with our Eurasian delegation, sponsored by our Tourism Department, thank you, Mrs. Cowan, for doing that, was very educational for me. I happened to sit at a table with a delegation from Kyrgyzstan with an interpreter, and I'm always amazed when I attend things where people from different nations, or even different parts of the United States, I always find out we have so much more in common than we do not, and that's always a good educational experience for me. They are dealing with the same types of tourism issues we are, they have declining natural resource development in this particular area, where they did not have resources, different than us, where we do have the resources, and so they're looking at programs to try to enhance people to come visit them and increase their road traffic. I believe that's all I have, and thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bernard?
You know, my decision last week was under a lot of pressure, but it wasn't the pressure that made me make, change my vote, and, you know, while in marriages, you both share a lot of responsibility and work together, it was, wasn't the fact that my wife asked me the questions, I guess it's kind of like, we used to have a mechanic in my business who would smash his hand every day, and the purpose of my wife was, you want to do that? Smash my hand? And, and it made me start to think about, you know, what my responsibilities are, and what I'm willing to put the citizens of Clackamas County through for another two years, if we're lucky. And when we opened it, and negotiated, in good faith, it was our responsibility to be faithful, and we did do that. And there are some things I'm interested in discussing about how we can make that contract a little better. Frankly, there's some, there's some things with the first responders, I'd like to almost see AMR raise the price a little bit, so that we can give a little bit more money to the responders, if that's, you know, the price discount was based on not only the reduction in employees' compensation, but also in that relationship with the fire districts, all of them. But, you know, it's a decision that I'm, frankly, I'm very proud of, I really feel good about it, I got to tell you. I attended the MAPIT meeting, which deals with a lot of the McLaughlin Corridor, and while I drive that every single day, well, I drove that probably every single day for most of my life, I never really noticed that there are very little, very few lights on McLaughlin. Matter of fact, you could count them on your hand for quite a distance, on one hand, for quite a distance, so that is something we need to work with the community in ODOT to figure out how to do, and if it's block by block, it needs to be block by block, that's what we need to do. But I got to tell you, that group has done a good job, I wouldn't want to be the one out there enforcing code, sign code, and some of these people in this committee walk up and say, you know, would you consider moving that sign off the public right of way, or would you consider just taking that sign away? It really doesn't do any good, it doesn't really promote your business. And some did, some didn't, but that's pretty amazing that they did that. This group is really working hard, and I attended because there was a misperception, I would say, at a meeting, that I didn't support the work that the MAPIT Committee was doing, and that was wrong, so I wanted to make sure that they knew that I was supportive of that group. Frankly, I'd love to see a project list for the McLaughlin area, that we could say, okay, let's find the money to do this one, let's find the money to do this one, whatever that is, so as soon as that group has come up with that specific project list, and we can price it out, let's start ticking them off, one at a time. But, you know, we actually have a lighting district concept that could work very well, it just requires the partnerships of the property owners. And I also would like to just recommend that, you know, improving the look of McLaughlin by putting something other than wooden poles, or ugly aluminum things, might be something worth really doing. I know we did it in Milwaukee, when we did the downtown plan, and slowly, those are being replaced, it just takes time, but it makes a big difference. So I look forward to that discussion. As far as licensing and restricting things, I used to describe Milwaukee, and I hope this doesn't happen in the county, that Milwaukee starts where the porn ends, and ends where the porn begins, and that's because cities have, I mean, the strip clubs, because cities have a little more ability to stop things than the county does, and some of that is Milwaukee had a really, kind of an ordinance, we always knew we'd lose if somebody challenged it, but it was enough to keep people from doing it. So I hate to see the cities say, no marijuana stores, and the county not have the ability to say, you can, if, yes or no, or where you can locate it. So I hope that discussion is something we can have, because I hope that in Milwaukee, we don't say, well, that's, Milwaukee starts where you can't buy marijuana, and it ends where you can. So I look forward to that discussion, and the ability of counties to do what's right, whether that's near schools, near libraries, near churches, in neighborhoods, we should have the ability to say when it's proper, or if it's never proper, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Savis?
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Bernard, thank you for sharing, sharing that willingness to look at the efforts of the MAP group. I chaired MAP I years ago, and was part of MAP II, and it was basically put together because of, I think, some, you know, some shortcomings that occurred from the previous commissions way back, that, and, you know, some assurances, and, you know, I won't use the word promises, but they were pretty strong assurances that, oh, it's going to be different this time, we're actually going to do something, we're actually going to invest in this community, and that was made by someone in the county, and I said, okay, then we'll participate, but we've always felt like we've been on the short end of the stick, the unincorporated areas haven't really got their fair share, and so, you know, I'm glad to hear that you're supporting the MAPIT effort, it's, we've done study after study, they've collected lots of dust, gone nowhere, never been funded, and, and so when it comes budget time, like I think I know I have in the past, try to get some monies appropriated towards some modest capital projects along the lines of the, somewhat that you identified, you know, lighting, for example, that when that time comes, I'll, I hope your support will be there like it is today. So I just want to say, before I forget, because of the inclement weather, and those maybe that are watching, that the C4 meeting is going to be canceled for tonight, so there will be no C4 meeting, so that'll be probably extended till April, because we'll be gone for our Washington DC trip in March, so it'll be April before that happens again. You know, I, a little bit, I wasn't going to speak about all about the ambulance contract, but there are a number of things that have been said, been said on the air, been said around, and, you know, to some degree, I will say that, wow, you know, I've been in every executive session, and I have been in every meeting with regard to the ambulance, and I keep on hearing things I never heard before. I got a pretty good memory, there's a lot of tapes, I can go back. There's a lot of tapes I can go back to reference upon, and, but I keep on hearing these things that are news. And of course, I hope that maybe, you know, some, exploring some of that new information might reveal something I'm not aware of, but I hope that, you know, we, that we don't over politicize the situation that we're in. Jim mentioned earlier, Commissioner Bernard mentioned that, you know, that our efforts of working in good faith, and I think that really that has been occurred, you know, for quite a long period of time. It's all been in good faith. And I think a majority of the commission, for a majority of that time, worked in good faith. But, you know, it has gotten crazy, and it's kind of unsettling when people hear things or someone in an elected position starts stating things that are not attached or not actually happened or said or real. And that's kind of distressing. It's kind of distressing to sit up here and hear things from some folks that didn't happen. And agreements that were referenced earlier related to a document, you know, which is public record for anyone to read. But I was just, I'm just stymied that at some point in time, we just got to knock off the nonsense here and get some business done. And I appreciate we're making headway that way, but I think it's incumbent upon all five of us to just pull together and finish this whole thing and not further politicize it.
Okay. So just a few comments I'd like to make before we adjourn, and wanted to let folks know what I've been up to. I just finished Good to Great, getting ready for our strategic planning, which I think is really going to help this commission move along with the work that we have to do for the people. I'm really looking forward to that.
Is that a book, Martha?
Yep. I don't remember the name of the author, but the title is Good to Great. And really, it is a really good book, and it will help inform any process that we go through. I also got information from our Regional Solutions Advisory Committee, which I serve on, and we have come up with our 2014 work plan, which will also help the county with a lot of things that need to be happening. I'm also looking at models for workforce collaboration at this point. We have a workforce investment board here in Clackamas County. There's been talk at the state level of realigning how we manage our workforce boards. And I'm working with the governor's office, and I'm working with the local workforce board, that any realignment, that we still maintain our identity as a workforce board, and that we look at collaborative models to look at a, what we call a labor shed in, here in the county, Multnomah County, our county, Clackamas, Multnomah County, Washington County, and also across the river in Washington State. We have to think of it as a larger area for people to have jobs. And I'm also hoping that with this work on workforce, Clackamas County can start to catch up because we still have not had the same level of job recovery as our neighboring counties. And I think that's a real concern for us here, and I think we need to continue to work on that. I had a meeting with Jody Carson. Jody Carson is a West Lynn City Councilor. She is now the Chair of the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee. And the reason we're chatting is that we are talking about climate smart communities. And I know my fellow commissioners have lots of questions about that, so we compiled those questions, made sure she has a look at them so there are no surprises as I go to that board and negotiate with other folks throughout the whole area about what does climate smart really mean for the county? And certainly, we don't want to be dealing with unfunded mandates, so that's something. The Willamette Falls Legacy Event is tonight at 5:30 in downtown Portland, and it's one of the few emails that I've gotten that said that it's still going on. Pretty much, a lot of other things have been canceled, so, I don't know, we're all waiting for snow. I will be braving it, heading over into Portlandia this evening for that event with Mayor Doug Neely. Also, at the Association of Oregon Counties, we had a recent meeting down there. I serve on the Business and Community Development Commission. And what we did was review, as a body of commissioners across the state, all the current legislation that has to deal with the economy, business, and also road and transportation infrastructures, what's going on in Salem, so we could come up as a body with our recommendations and stand as the legislature meets this month. I'm not going to belabor any things, except I will just make one statement, is I feel that ambulance contracts are very difficult. I read everything, I weighed everything, I made a decision, and, you know, and with all due respect to my colleagues, I just stuck with the decision based on the information I had at hand. And that's just kind of how, from my perspective, that's how I do business. And I don't think sometimes we, we kind of overreact to things. And if we would just not overreact, it would be very helpful because it is a difficult job. As far as being threatened, you know, I really, I really feel for Commissioner Smith because I've been in the same situation when I lived on my farm in Camby. I had very neighbors who were very angry folks and who, and when I was elected official in the Senate and a commissioner, I would pretty much have to drive by illegal signs every day. And with signs like calling our president a fascist Nazi, things like Martha put on your big girl pants, you're, you know, you're a spendin', you know, just nasty stuff. It got so bad, I actually, I took photographs. And I did, I'd never turned them in to code enforcement, even though these were illegal signs, because I didn't want to see that as punitive at all. Okay? And I just thought, I'm an elected official, I'm just going to have to put up with this because that's the way it's going to be. But I did get afraid, and I did actually do a community report with our sheriff's office just in case something happened. You know, they would know that, you know, people had been really unpleasant, and it's also the reason why I have two big black dogs, because I was feeling threatened and alone up there and on this farm. And frankly, it was one of the reasons that when the time came, I went to urban area now because I couldn't stay, I really didn't feel safe staying on that farm for a long time. So I guess I'm just telling folks this is that, that it is difficult being elected, that I hope the public treats us with kindness and respect because we do have to make really such difficult decisions. People's lives depend on us. They're, they cost money. We're trying to balance the needs of a community, a really diverse community. And when we are uncivil to one another, it just taints and distorts the whole process. So that's my, that's my soapbox for the day, colleagues. And I'm just going to say goodbye to Jenny. I've had a medically fragile baby living with me in the last few months with a young woman. She has now found her own place after staying with me, and I'm really going to miss her a lot. It was always nice to come home to a baby. Now I'm just going to go home to the two big black dogs. So anyway.
So Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah.
We just got a report that a county employee, a waystation master from DTD Road Division, was shot and killed in the Boring area off Highway 224.
I think we were just informed, and I think that our public and government relations people are tracking it with the sheriff, yeah, at this point.
So my prayers.
Just keep that, keep, I don't think there's much information out, but keep that person in your prayers and whoever it is, their family as well. So, and as I said, that's part of the job. Yes, Commissioner Sabbath.
I want to have one, one thought, just want to just share my earlier comments. I want to make sure that I, no one misunderstands, you know, my comment. I just wanted to say that AMR and that group have, have, have worked in good faith through this whole process, and I didn't want to cast that aspersion that it was otherwise. I just, I think it's just been kind of silly lately, and we just need to, again, pull together and get this thing settled.
We're all human. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, the Vice Chair adjourns the meeting.